There's a Can-Am waiting for you at Myers Equipment and Supply, 301 North Jefferson in Dublin.
The November 17th, 2022 meeting of the Dublin City Council is hereby called an order. I'd ask Councilman Bill Brown to provide the invocation, and then that will be followed. Please remain standing for the pledge that will be led by Connor Warren, Boy Scout, who is here in the front with us. So we'll begin with the invocation. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this opportunity to gather in the council chambers to carry on the daily activities of the city of Dublin. We ask to be mindful of us, help us to be mindful of everything we think, say, and do. Will it be pleasing to thee? Also, dear Lord, as we embark on the Thanksgiving season, we have many things to be thankful for, and we need to, again, thank you for all the things that thou bestowed upon us from above. I go with some guidance and directives in the first meeting. Amen.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight for the city council meeting. Last, at our last meeting, we were at the VA auditorium, and we had a great meeting there, but it's always good to be back to our normal place here. We're going to begin the meeting tonight with a special presentation. This will be the presentation for our employee of the third quarter. The presentation will be given by our mayor pro tem, Bill Brown. Mr. Powell, will you please give us some information?
Sure. Quick ahead, Ms. Yvonne Baker, come down, please. We are pleased to announce that Yvonne Baker is the employee of the third quarter 2022 for the city of Dublin. Yvonne has been a very dedicated employee for the city for 25 years. She was hired on April 1st, 1997, as secretary in the gas department. On January 2006, she was given more responsibilities when she became the administrative assistant for Public Works Department, which consisted of the cemetery, gas, street, and water construction department. Several years later, she was promoted to the gas public awareness coordinator and public works administrative assistant. Yvonne took on these new appointments like a champ. She made sure that whatever job she was doing or whatever title she held, she always did it with professionalism and a smile on her face. And I can guarantee you, she's always had a smile on her face in what she's done. Yvonne's job responsibilities are numerous, and she is very knowledgeable of them. She wears many hats in the gas department and does a fabulous job making sure everyone's needs are met. She is hardworking, a hardworking individual with great work ethic, who always goes beyond the goals set for the department. She has a willingness to do extra work and training inside and outside of the job to learn as much as she can to better serve the citizens of Dublin as well as her coworkers. She is that employee that is always here to work on time with a positive attitude, looking for ways to make the department better. She has a great customer service skills, and she's always friendly and outgoing and happy to help her citizens and coworkers with whatever they need. She has become the go-to person in the department, and her door is always open to lend a helping hand to her fellow coworkers. Yvonne is a vital part of the department, and they don't know what they'd do without you, and neither do I. I thank you so much for your work and hard work and dedication to the city, and it's a real pleasure to work with you and have you work here for the city. And just thank you. Congratulations.
I'm Heath Richster, and we just want to invite everybody to come on down to the Houston Clinic and check us out at our new facility. We've been in Dublin for a while now, obviously, but have a new office here, and we'd just like you to come down and see some of the new stuff we're offering. And if you need to get checked out, we'd be glad to do that for you. Got to able to do some ultrasound-guided injections now, and physical therapy, and just a little bit better space, so hopefully we can get you in and out of here a little bit quicker.
Come by and see us today at our brand-new location, the Houston Clinic Medical Drive in Dublin. Wayne Kemp's Dublin Auto Sales will put you in the driver's seat today. Come see our great selection of quality pre-owned cars, trucks, and SUVs. Our sales professionals are ready and waiting. Come see TJ, Trey, Alan, and Britt at Wayne Kemp's Dublin Auto Sales, where good deals and good people meet. Visit us at 606 East Jackson Street in Dublin, call us at 275-2010, or log on to dublinautosalesga.com. Wayne Kemp's Dublin Auto Sales will put you in the driver's seat today.
All right, well, thank you for that, and thank you for your service to the city. And every time I see you, you have a smile on your face, which is terrific. Thank you for the light that you bring to all those people around here who work with you, know you. We're going to move into the agenda tonight, but I just wanted everyone to know that we had a pre-council meeting tonight, and there are city council members who are at the National League of Cities meeting in Kansas City tonight, and so they're not here with us at the actual council meeting, but they did participate in the pre-council meeting. We went over the agenda, and we are happy that they are getting all the education that they're getting at the National League of Cities conference, and that they're going to bring that back to the city council when they return and help us do a better job in serving the citizens. So moving forward with the first agenda item, we have the approval of the November 3rd, 2022 meeting minutes. Those meeting minutes have been provided to council members. Do we have a motion?
No motion.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The next item is approval of bills over $15,000. Mr. Powell?
The council has the copy of all the bills, as well as all of the expenditures of the city since our last approval. In your pocket.
City council members have had an opportunity to review this. Do you have any questions for staff? If not, is there a motion?
No motion.
We have a motion from Mr. Mascara. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilman Griggs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now we'll move to item number three, approval of purchases over $15,000. Mr. Powell?
We have no purchases tonight, Mr. Mayor.
That's easy enough, then. We'll move to item number four, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex 50 acres. Mr. Powell?
This is ordinance number 22-26, annexing and incorporating it of the municipality of the city of Dublin, Georgia, 50.02 acres, more or less a property located at parcel 108, as M2s on the proposed use as industrial and distribution facility. This property is located, just for the public's benefit, if you might there see on the map, at the intersection of the 441 bypass and Highway 257.
All right. It's now time to close the city council meeting and open a public hearing to receive public comment regarding this ordinance. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak in favor of or against this ordinance? Now is your time to, all right, Mr. Rowland, is that right?
Sorry.
Okay. If you can come forward, you have a total of five minutes. We also request, under our council rules, that you state your name and address before you begin.
Sure. My name is Stephen Rowland. I'm with Rowland Engineering. My address is 318 Corporate Parkway, Macon, Georgia, 31210. We're on behalf of HFG Development LLC, the developer seeking to develop a property and have it annexed into the city. This particular property, we propose a building at 810,000 square feet, along with associated truck parking and truck docks, loading docks, and employee parking. A single entrance is proposed from Highway 257 to service the development. Georgia DFT will not allow driveways on the bypass, so cannot install a driveway in that location. The topography of the site dictates that this former pond would be at the intersection. Do you have some copies of the site? May I pass those?
Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you. This former pond would be at the corner of the bypass and 257. Staff has recommended some conditions to buffer that pond, and we agreed to comply with those conditions. That buffer and also buffers to the employee parking area. The planning commission has recommended approval. Staff has recommended approval of the annexation zone. I've asked for your vote to do the same. We have to answer any questions that you can have.
All right. As this is the applicant for the annexation, you know, normally we don't have question and answer, but as this is the applicant, if any council members have questions for Mr. Rowland, now would be the time. It doesn't appear that anybody has any questions, so thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance? All right, last opportunity. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn this matter over to council for action.
Make a motion to approve the annexation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Colby and a second from Councilman Brown. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we will now take a roll call vote on this ordinance. Ms. Brown?
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby?
Yes.
Councilman Griggs?
Yes.
Councilman Mascara?
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
All right, thank you for that.
Here's a big announcement from Central Georgia Primary Care. We're proud to announce the opening of our second location right here on Central Drive in East Dublin. No matter where you are, north, south, east, or west, Central Georgia Primary Care has a health professional waiting to serve you. Central Georgia Primary Care, next to Paul's Tower on Industrial Boulevard in Dublin, and now at our brand-new location on Central Drive in East Dublin, right next to Thomas Auto Supply. Need an appointment? Call us at 478-202-9440. Central Georgia Primary Care, waiting to serve you at both locations, Industrial Boulevard in Dublin and now on Central Drive in East Dublin.
Item number five of the agenda, which is the second reading and public hearing on an ordinance to annex 116 acres. Mr. Powell?
This is ordinance number 22-27, annexing and incorporating it of the municipality of the city of Dublin, Georgia, 116, 431 acres, more or less a property located at parcel 101C, 172, as M2, industrial loan, the proposed use is industrial and distribution facility. And this property, just for the public's benefit, is located also off of Highway 257, just past I-16 across from Loves.
All right, we will now close the council meeting and open a public hearing on this ordinance. Is there anyone who would wish to speak in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance? Mr. Rowland? All right, I think we've already got your name and address, so go for it. I'll go ahead and pass out the plans first this time.
Thank you.
Very similar to the previous item, this is much larger, 116 acres. We propose three buildings on this side, the largest building being 1.2 million square feet, one of 225,000 square feet, and another building of 125,000 square feet. Two larger buildings are set up, made for distribution type, perhaps distribution type. You can see the smaller building does not have as many loading docks as those, which tend, lend it better to be more of a manufacturing-type facility. Billy Road is to be abandoned. You see, we've taken in the right way of Billy Road in our conceptual plan. The county has already voted to abandon it. GDOT wishes for it to be abandoned because of its location right beside the interstate ramp. They see it as a safety concern, a safety hazard. One entrance will be provided to this development to line up with the truck entrance to Loves, and a traffic study is currently underway to meet GDOT requirements for improvements needed to provide that entrance. Water and sewer are available on the site. Just one of the reasons why we would like to be annexed into the city, so we can use your services. Same as before, planning commission has recommended approval for this one. Staff has recommended approval. If you have any questions about this proposal, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Again, as Mr. Rowland represents the applicant, if any council members have questions, now would be the time.
Just real, the entrance, is that two lanes, one in and one out?
That's right. So it would be wider than your typical, probably 24 feet typical, this is probably 30 feet because of the truck traffic.
This may be a question for Mr. Bradshaw, but where is our current water, sewage, and gas? You said it's adjacent to this property?
There's a manhole that's been stubbed across the road from Loves.
Okay.
And it exists right at the front of the property. The developer would be responsible for extending it into the site.
I see that there are a couple of houses along Pine Hill Road to the, appears to be the
Be the south.
Southwest of the property. Is there a buffer?
Yes. Some of the conditions, recommended conditions are, we maintain a 50% buffer adjacent to your residential properties.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council meeting and turn this matter to council for action.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Colby and a second from Councilman Brown to approve the rezoning ordinance. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Brown, will you call the roll, please?
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby?
Yes.
Councilman Griggs?
Yes.
Councilman Mascara?
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
All right. Thank you for your presentations and for bringing those materials. That's always very helpful. Appreciate the role that staff played in working with you guys to get to a favorable outcome, and I'm looking forward to the development of these properties and some additional industries and warehousing in the city.
Thank you for the investment.
Yeah, thank you for that investment.
I'm Betty Hall. I've been a member here since 2015, and I enjoy it. And I started because I had retired for a few years, gaining weight, got an invitation to come to the aerobics class, and I came, and I've been here ever since. And the workout, the people are nice. I mean, it's just like a family. I've been here going on eight years, and I come almost every day. And I invite you to come, you know, if you want to work out, get your health better, and just meet some wonderful people. I just think you will enjoy it.
So we'll now move to item number six on the agenda, which is discussion and action on a resolution to approve a consulting agreement. Mr. Powell?
This is resolution number 2257, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to accept and approve the terms of an agreement with Michael Clay, a professional consulting services, to set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. We currently have a contract with Michael for his consulting services, and that is set to expire on December 31st. And staff and I have confirmed on it and agreed that his knowledge of the city and particularly his utility operations is a great asset and benefit to us to have him as a resource. And so we're asking council to, this resolution will authorize the contract to proceed into 2023, and also that I will be allowed to extend that agreement at a date appropriate, you know, thereafter, without having to come back to council.
All right, so Mr. Powell has explained the purpose of this contract. Do we have any questions for staff? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Mascara and a second from Councilman Griggs. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Let's move on to item number seven, which is a resolution to approve a gas supply agreement. Mr. Powell?
This is resolution number 2258, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to approve agreements with WestRock Southeast LLC for natural gas utility services, to set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Just for the public's benefit, WestRock is our largest natural gas customer, and we enter into special agreements with them for the provision of their natural gas needs. And this actually, this resolution will actually approve two agreements. One is for their, some renewable natural gas that is a new thing for the city that will be up and running effectively in 2023, and then also for interruptible gas, which is a daily demand gas that they get. They contact Mr. Bradshaw and let us know each day how much gas they're going to need the following day. But then the supplemental agreement, the second agreement, involves a firm gas, which is gas that they contract to burn and guarantee they'll burn every day. And if they don't burn that gas, they're charged for it, or we attempt to sell it back and save them that money.
Okay, great. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this? Just out of curiosity, and I hate to do this, but about how much does WestRock spend on gas for the city on monthly basis? Do you know, Mr. Bradshaw?
It'd be several hundred thousand dollars. It varies a lot, but I mean, they spend a lot of money on gas. And of course, you know, we only get, of course, that goes around the pay for the gas from pipeline, but they, they're our major gas customer. There's a lot of cities our size that would love to have a customer of that magnitude.
I think our, if I'm not mistaken, our gas budget's around 25 million, and they're like around 17 million of that, I think, is the last thing I saw from last year.
All right. Well, I appreciate the work that you do to make sure that they have the gas that they need to run that plant. That's a major part of the city's budget, and I know that's a major part of your job is making sure that they're supplied the way they need to, so appreciate the work that you do on that. All right, do we have any more questions for staff regarding this gas supply agreement? If not, do we have a motion?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Mascara. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move now to item number eight on the agenda, which is a resolution to abandon an easement along Hillcrest Drive. Mr. Powell?
Resolution 2259, sorry, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to abandon an easement on Hillcrest Drive, to set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Just to explain this one, the, where Hillcrest Parkway is currently, you know, was changed many years ago, and we maintained an easement across this piece of property, which is adjacent to the lot that Rose is, is located on. You may be familiar, those of you familiar with town, there's a sidewalk, the rest of this piece of property, as you can still see today. There it is, a little screen up there. And yeah, you can see that strip where Hillcrest Drive used to run through that piece of property. And we maintain to have a borderline and a sidewalk there, and we have, now that Hillcrest Parkway has been fully expanded, we have no need for that anymore, so we can abandon that easement.
Okay, does this city have any duty to pull up the sidewalk, or will the sidewalk just remain there?
Yeah, it'll just remain.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff? All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Colby and a second from Councilman Brown to approve the resolution. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Epp Lake and the staff at Lake's Alignment has been serving Lawrence's surrounding counties since 1954, offering you the best in suspension, alignment, and tire services. And now Epp and Lisa Lake are proud to announce the addition of Neil Harden and our 24-hour truck-trailer and tire repair facility with state-of-the-art equipment. Lake's Tire Facility is conveniently located to I-16 and all roads throughout Middle Georgia. Call on us 24 hours a day, seven days a week for truck-trailer and tire repair. Call 272-4230. Serving the southeast for over 65 years. Lake's Alignment and now 24-hour truck-trailer and tire repair.
Allen's Heating and Cooling is your licensed manna equipment dealer. Trust Allen's Heating and Cooling to install and service your heating and cooling unit. Allen services all brands, and with the purchase of a new Amana, offers a lifetime compressor warranty. Call Sean Clark or any of his friendly staff at Allen's Heating and Cooling. If you're a manna dealer, Amana lasts and lasts and lasts.
All right, now we're moving to the last item on the agenda, which is a resolution to authorize the purchase of wetland credits. Mr. Powell?
This is resolution number 2260, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to authorize the purchase of wetland credits for the industrial sewer project, to set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. We currently have a sewer line that we're going to partially relocate, running behind, generally behind YTK, just the broad area where it covers. But it will connect, actually, the piece of property where, that we just had the annexation earlier on the agenda, that's at the corner of the bypass and Highway 257, and it'll connect from there all the way back behind. And we rerouted the sewer line to avoid as much of the wetlands as we could. We still have about a quarter of an acre that will be affecting, so we have to buy wetland credits for that, and the cost of this is going to be $60,800. And also, this resolution will authorize staff to apply for the permit.
All right, you've heard Mr. Powell's explanation of the resolution. Do we have any questions for staff? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown and a second from Councilman Mascara. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Because everybody's still awake.
Don't keep us too much longer.
Well, we're now at citizens' college, but I want to make a comment to start with. You know, tonight, we've talked about gas supply agreements, we've talked about wetland credits, we've talked about real property and annexations, and really, this is the stuff that's not too exciting. It doesn't bring out the public the way some of our community development projects do, but the truth is, this is what funds everything else. This is where the money is.
Absolutely.
And I want to, I want to thank our city engineer, Matthew Bradshaw, because he keeps our local industries happy, and I see Ryan out there, Ryan with our development authority. You also keep our local industries happy and growing, and without you guys, we couldn't do the things that we want to do for community development. So we really appreciate you and the staff and the authorities, and we also appreciate you, you guys, for coming and investing in town, and I hope that you see that we appreciate you, we appreciate your investment, and that we have very professional staff that want to make sure that your, your needs for gas, water, sewer are met, so that you can continue to grow in this community. So tonight was a little bit boring, but it's the foundation that allows everything else to happen. So we made it through it, and now it's time for citizen comments. Any citizens want to provide comments tonight? All right, if we don't have any citizen comments, then we will move to, we're not going to have executive session tonight, okay? So there will not be an executive session tonight, so we'll have council comments. Well, I should start with you, Mr. Daniels, any comments?
No comments.
Ms. Brown?
No comments.
All right. Ms. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to congratulate Yvonne Baker again for being named Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations. Thank you for everything that you have done and will do and continue to do for the city. I just want to, again, thank everybody for being here, the presentations. Next week is Thanksgiving, and as I mentioned in prayer, let's be thankful for what, for what we all do have. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Colby?
It's all underground, people. Everything that happens on top of the ground happens because of what happens under the ground. So we are so grateful and thankful that we do have these services in place in our, in our city, especially for our gas department and the state of the country, your service there. So it's exciting to me because I think that that builds the foundation of what's going to come in the future, and especially for what my ultimate goal is, to bring my children and keep my children here in town, and have wonderful industries for them to be able to work and stay and live here. So I thank y'all for being here and even on the mundane at times, and have a Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you. Councilman Mascara?
Skip the
Uh, we'll come back towards the
He wanted to make sure you were awake.
I was awake, I was just thinking. I'm not a neighbor of Dublin. I moved here 12 years ago and have been involved in different aspects of the community, and I'm proud to be here, and I'm proud to be with the people that And I'm proud, uh, to be with the people that keep coming out. Miss Patsy keeping the gas on, thank you, we needed the restaurant, we don't want to have to get it shut off. But just to see people come in and, and looking at our community as a viable, uh, place to, to do business and to grow. Uh, and there are kids in, in communities in our, uh, town that need y'all to come, that we look forward, uh, to helping grow. Um, and I, just, it makes me happy, even the mundane stuff, which is the stuff I like the most. Um, when it's happening, that means that we're going to prosper and the more we keep, uh, allowing companies to come in and, and setting, um, what we just, what we, we perceive to be the right step forward and y'all, um, giving that, uh, to the way that we want to, it helps our community. And, uh, just proud to be a part of it. Doesn't always go, uh, easy, but, uh, it goes. And, uh, I think we've got a good council now that, uh, is working their tails off. It's made Dublin, um, the best place it can possibly be. So, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and, uh, we'll see y'all next time.
All right, great. Mr. Griggs.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Uh, just want to thank everybody for coming and I'm going to echo what everybody else has said and have a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
All right, great. Mr. Powell.
Thank you all for being here and, uh, Ms. Yvonne, thank you again and congratulations. Uh, without you and working hard and keeping those guys in the gas pump rolling, that's, these companies, WestRock wouldn't have any gas. That's a real important step there. Um, but I want to remind everybody that tomorrow, city hall, uh, will be closed at 10:45 until about 1 o'clock.